Athens City Council, it's Monday, June 17th at 7:00 PM. And tonight, we're in regular session. Our first item of business is to establish a quorum. We have six of our seven council members present tonight. The next item of business is disposition of the minutes for the regular sessions held on May 20th, 2019, and June 3rd, 2019. If I could have a motion?
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and second for approval of the minutes. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The minutes have been approved. We next have communications. And council members are in receipt of a letter from Senator Hoagland, who thanks us for the resolution that we sent about restoring local government funds. And said that he always likes to hear from us, so there we go. That's good. And we didn't get a note on his position on that, but anyway, thank you. We thank him for his response back. Are there council members, other council members, who have communications? Councilmember Kotzis?
President Isley, thank you. The Athens City School Board does have their monthly meeting coming up on June 27th at 6:30 PM. This is the regular board meeting at the Athens High School auditorium.
Okay, thanks.
Question?
Yes.
Do they put on the calendar any of the days talking to the different neighborhoods about the building?
I have not, I have not heard that yet, no.
Well, yeah, maybe find out.
Okay. Yep.
Good. Any other communications? We'll move on to reports and communications from other elected officials, that being the mayor.
And Senator Hoagland says hi. I'm just with him over today.
He said he'll send us.
He sends his love to Athens.
Checks him out.
I have several items I want to share with council and the viewing audience tonight from Engineering and Public Works. The first being that West Washington Street closure, which will be June 19th through the 21st. This is for an AEP utility pole placement. So that's going to be coming up. University Estates, there is a roadway slip repair, embankment repair, that's going on. And that looks like it will go from Tuesday, tomorrow, the 18th, through Tuesday, the 25th. It was a significant slip up there where there were some utilities that were damaged, are now repaired, so they're going to be doing a lot of re, or armoring of that slip area. Factory Street closure, this is started today and will run through July 17th for street reconstruction. Factory Street, Station Street, South to Riverside Drive. North College, this is where we've had some significant challenges through there. We will be doing a repair. We're going to take a, we're going to, to camera, the sanitary sewer, and then also start with that. We're going to look to see what's the extent in which they're going to do a sleeve fix to that sewer line where they'll run a polymer sleeve through the sewer. And then they use steam to harden that particular sleeve as a repair. So that's, they're going to, they're going to scope it out tomorrow. Tomorrow, they're going to scope it out. Oops. Started today. The other thing I want to share, a couple of things, something I received from the Director of Engineering and Public Works, Bob Hetty, is that he gave me an update on behavior changes and some efficiencies that have gone on down at, in the world of Engineering and Public Works, replacing an electric heater in a storage room with a gas heater. Replaced AEP area lights with the city-owned LED lights. Added a motion detector for the copy room, break rooms, bathroom, laundry room, and the basement down at Engineering and Public Works. Switched the overhead lighting to LED lighting, as well as placed thermostatic control receptacles for engine block heaters on their diesel trucks. And to this point in time, for 2019, as of June, they've seen a savings of $4,159.50 with some relatively simple fixes down there. So I have to give kudos to Engineering and Public Works for really being diligent about upgrades down there and saving the city money. Also received an indicator, or email rather, from the climate mayors. And this is through a meeting, this is the US Mayor's Association is meeting on June 27th, and the city is being recognized with other municipalities for our efforts in expanding our electric vehicle fleet. As you know, the Code Enforcement Office has three Nissan Leafs. I believe we're one of the few in southeastern Ohio that has an EV fleet of that size. So we're being recognized at a national conference with those. And then finally, well, almost finally, I got one other thing. This is interesting, I want to share this with council. I received an email from Phil Cantino, who had a group that went up into Hawk Woods, and they did some core sampling for ring counts of some of our trees. And they've identified a number of tulip trees up there that are in excess of 250 years old. Think about that for a second. That means that these are trees that started growing before Manasseh Cutler and Rufus Putnam came out this way to establish the city of Athens. So he's going to go up and GPS locate a lot of these historic living monuments. And we're going to put permanent markers up there with some of these historic trees. And again, start to archive them and make a, basically a registry. I know that Chris Fall, Councilmember Fall, has been a champion of us doing a better job with our historic trees in the city. So I think that this is great. We'll be, I'll be meeting with Phil Cantino to think about our next steps for further protecting some of our cherished elderly. The last thing I want to share with council was something that came out of the mayor's, Ohio Mayor's Alliance meeting, the first meeting that I attended almost a week and a half ago up in Columbus. And as you remember, the Ohio Mayor's Alliance is the 30 most populated cities in the state of Ohio. The mayors come together, and I now sit as a voting member on that board representing southeastern Ohio. But something I want to share, this happened last year, where the city of Akron experienced a significant hack into their, their system up there, their telecommunications system, their city broadband and municipal infrastructure. And they ended up contacting the National Guard, which has a cyber warfare group that came and helped them, assisted them. And out of that, the state, and in particular, the Adjutant General, has decided that they need to create what's called a Ohio Cyber Reserve. And this will be a reserve force of volunteers who are well-versed in knowing what to identify if a municipality is significantly hacked and your ability to communicate is taken down, which, I'm not being an alarmist, I mean, it's a reality these days with things like that happening. And as they stand up this force, I'm excited about this because this gives us something, a group that we can reach out to in critical times where if something were to happen where we were significantly hacked and malware is deployed, and all of a sudden we find ourselves without the ability to communicate from municipal building to municipal building. Some of the things learned from Akron is doing simple things like calling out snow removal trucks, or being able to do other things that are normal city operations, they became crippled with what happened. Successfully, they were able to get it back up and going again. But again, I want to share that with council. Again, I'm excited that the Ohio National Guard is taking this on and creating a resource to where if we found ourselves in a situation like that, or any municipality, that we have someone we can contact and get the assistance that we need to make sure that we can get our systems back up and going again if we were to be compromised somehow. So there's a lot of great information that comes out of the Ohio Mayor's Alliance, and I hope to share more with council as I continue to attend those meetings.
Great.
Thank you.
Good to know about the resources. Tonight, we have readings of ordinances. And we have our third reading of ordinance, third reading for ordinances. It occurs first in the agenda. And these are the ones that are, will be approved tonight, to the best of our knowledge. And then the ordinances for the second reading tonight will be given a third reading next Monday, June 24th. So they'll be read through by title tonight, and a moment will be offered if anybody wants to ask any questions or offer any comments on those. Then because of, I think, the beginning of summer schedules, what's happening is, is that the readings that we have tonight for our first readings will be suspended because we won't have enough council members here next Monday night to be able to suspend. So it seems a little bit contraindicating of, or the reverse order of, in which then some things will occur. But that's why it's happening tonight in the way that it is. So we'll move through with our readings, ordinances for third reading. 4919 is an ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into a grant agreement with the Northeast Ohio Public Energy Council, known as NOPEC, in order to accept NOPEC energized community NEC grants. And this is introduced by all members of council. And by way of a little background information that the mayor has previously provided, this is a grant, the second year that I believe that we were participating in this grant. The first year being that we had solar lighting system at some of our bus shelters. And then this year, our proposed projects are the portable tables, picnic tables, on which solar chargers will be placed so that people can plug into those chargers. And those units will be able to be used at the pool and at other places on city property around town. So if I could have a motion for approval?
I submit.
Okay.
Second.
So we have a motion and second for approval of ordinance 4919. And did anyone want to offer any other comments or additional information? Okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The motion carries and the ordinance is approved. Ordinance 5119 is an ordinance amending Athens City Code Title IX, General Regulations, Chapter 9.04, Outdoor Fires, Section 9.04.01, Outdoor Fires Without Permit, Unlawful, and Chapter 9.05, Fire Control, Petroleum Liquids. And then Section 9.5.01, Definitions. And this is introduced by Councilmember Fall.
Thank you. I would move that we amend 5119.
Second.
Thank you. The last time we had this discussion in council, we asked the fire chief for several things, clarifications. He's come back with that. So I would like to change out some of the language that was a little confusing in 904.01A, when it talks about "no person shall kindle or cause to be kindled any open burning," instead of "a fire in any street or alley," which was very confusing, "within 90 feet of any building." And then further on down, it defines what is required to be, that a permit shall not be required for kindling of a fire in a charcoal or gas grill. Identifying gas there and not making an assumption. And then later in, it's talking about when they would have no burn days, and the, wanted to add that when it's so smoky that interferes with roadway visibility. That was one of the important things. And the last section, it's just the definitions. So now there's a better definition of open burning. And it's now "open burning, the burning of materials wherein products of combustion are emitted directly into the ambient air without passing through a stack or chimney from an enclosed chamber to include recreational and bonfires." That's the important thing. And you can have fires, except for they have to be in regulated fire grades with certain scale of wire mesh over it.
So we have a motion and second for amending ordinance 5119. Any other, and that would be as described by Councilmember Fall. Yes, comments? Yes.
Thank you, President Isley. If my memory serves me correctly, the definition comes from the state. So that's just helpful information that wasn't made up out of nowhere, but is a formal definition from the state. Thank you.
Yes, Councilmember McGee?
First, I'd like to thank the chief for providing us with the information that we requested. And I understand the amendments and the purpose of the amendments. I did want to clarify my position on this just slightly, and that's, I have some concern that insurance companies may use ordinances against citizens as far as trying not to pay out alleging that this is in violation of a particular ordinance or state law or whatever, so that it nullifies the policy. So it's always my concern that in trying to do something right, and I certainly believe the city of Athens, with our history of dealing with fires, we certainly should do our best to protect the citizens. I'm always concerned that what we end up doing is also the secondary aspect, which is perhaps making things more difficult for citizens to recover on their insurance policies, especially if their unit is a rental unit and the, and the fire or negligence on the part of the tenant is such that the landlord or the property owner is then left with very little chance of recovery. So I wanted to point that out to council, that sometimes we have to be very careful about what we're approving, even though it may appear to be the right thing to do.
Any other comments? Comments from the audience or questions? Okay. So we now need to vote on the amendment. All those in favor signify amendments. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Okay, the ordinance has been amended and read for the first time.
And now I would like to offer a suspension of the rules.
Second.
Thank you. As what we talked about earlier in the beginning of the meeting, about doing diligence on our time period.
Okay. So we have a motion and second for suspending the rules. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The rules have been suspended. Councilmember Fall.
Now I ask that we adopt 5119.
Second.
Thank you. And we've discussed this.
Okay. Any other questions, final questions or comments? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The motion carries and the ordinance is approved. Ordinance 5219 is an ordinance amending ordinance 1919 to correct the parcel ID numbers, granting an enhanced access easement to allow utilities to property contiguous to Hope Drive. This is introduced by Councilmember Fall.
Thank you. This is more of a housekeeping ordinance. I move that we adopt 5219.
Second.
And this is to correct the parcel IDs. They were flipped in the application.
Okay. We have a motion and second for approval. Any other comments or questions? Right. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, oh, opposed? Yeah, okay. I thought you were going to offer a comment. Thank you. The ordinance, the motion carries and the ordinance has been approved. Ordinance 5319 is an ordinance amending Title 17, Municipal Income Tax, Chapter 17.01 in general, Section 17.01.18, Local Board of Review, Appeal to Local Board of Tax Review. And is introduced by Councilmember Fall.
Thank you. I move that we pass 5319 under protest. I will do it under protest.
And do we have a second?
Second. Reluctantly.
All right. We have a motion and second for amending our municipal income tax.
Yes. This is one of the long line of ordinances that we've had to adopt because the state has reserved our home rule authority to do certain things with our tax ability that is protected in the Ohio Constitution. Thank you.
Okay. So a motion and second for approval. Any other comments or questions? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries and the ordinance is approved. Okay, we now have ordinances for second reading. Ordinance 5419 is an ordinance authorizing fiber optic network construction to traffic signals on East State Street, Project 328, and authorizing an inter-fund transfer, introduced by Councilmember Kotzis. Ordinance 5519 is an ordinance authorizing design engineering services for the West Union Street Improvements, Project Number 322, introduced by Councilmember Kotzis. Ordinance 5619 is going to be an exception tonight, I think, because we're going to be suspending on this one and one other. This is an ordinance authorizing a slip repair on University Estates Boulevard and declaring an emergency, introduced by Councilmember Kotzis.
President Isley, I would like to suspend the rules on 05619.
Second.
The reason being?
Oh, the reason being, actually, the mayor already mentioned this in his communications. They would like to start work tomorrow on this slip that needs to be repaired as soon as possible.
Okay. We have a motion and second for suspending the rules. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The rules have been suspended.
President Isley, I would like to make a motion to adopt ordinance 05619.
Second.
Okay. We have a motion and second for approval of this ordinance. Any other comments or questions? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The motion carries and the ordinance is approved. Ordinance 5719 is an ordinance declaring a real and present emergency, thus obviating the formal bidding procedure for residential and franchise area refuse and recycling collection services, introduced by all members of council. And I do believe we might have, is there anybody who wants to offer a comment tonight? Or, sure, Mr. Underwood, come on up.
Good evening. I'm Bruce Underwood, Executive Director at Athens Stock and Recycling, Robert Road, Logan, Ohio, 43138. I just want to mention that, you know, we sat down on Friday with the city administration, worked through some details for the extension. I think we've got the details handled, so I think hopefully you have all that information before you with this ordinance, and we can get a piece together and make sure where there's no stop and stoppage in service for, between now or on July 1st. And the last time I was at council, there was a question in my mind about some of the issues with, that came up with that. And I just want to remind council that I spoke with Debbie Walker and got some information about the last time the rate codes were raised. And that was in 2010. So I think that's worth pointing out, that it's been a substantial amount of time before, or since rate codes were looked at and adjusted, both for trash and for recycling. And then the numbers that we provided, you know, there was, you know, as spoke about many times before, the state of the recycling industry, there's some increases in there for that, for the cost of recycling. Otherwise, the cost proposed for the extension is very similar to what the city is being charged now under the current extension. That's all I have.
Thank you. Thanks for being here tonight. Thank you. All right. Any other comments or questions? Okay. Ordinance 5819 is an ordinance authorizing the mayor to submit an application to participate in the state capital improvement and/or local transportation improvement program for Issue One funds to execute contracts as required, and is introduced by Councilmember McGee. Ordinance 5919 is an ordinance amending the 2019 appropriation ordinance, and is introduced by Councilmember Reisner. Ordinance 6019 is an ordinance authorizing the auditor to enter into an merchant agreement with a government payment service, GPS Inc., to allow the income tax department to accept credit card payments, and is introduced by Councilmember Reisner. Ordinance 6119 is an ordinance authorizing the promotion of a fire lieutenant to a fire captain in accordance with a non-union personnel fringe benefits package. Ordinance 14318 and declaring an emergency, introduced by the Finance and Personnel Committee.
Thank you, Madam President. I understand there was a need to suspend this. Is that correct?
To get the hiring process started.
So the reason for suspension is, I mean, how do I define that?
As I understand, I had heard that there was need to do this so that we're in compliance with state law.
There's that as well.
Okay, so with public safety.
Okay.
Okay, so I'd like to make a motion that we suspend the rules for 6119 for reasons of public safety. I've stated the reason, so let's vote on it.
Okay. So we have a motion and second for suspending the rules on ordinance 6119. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The rules have been suspended.
Thank you, Madam President. I move that we adopt 6119. Second. And the reason is, we need to fill this position and get it done as quickly as possible.
Okay. We have a motion and second for approval of 6119. Are there any other comments or questions? Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The motion carries and the ordinance has been approved. Ordinance 6219 is an ordinance amending Athens City Code Title 33, Wireless Telecommunications Facilities, Chapter 43.07A, Special Use Permit Application and Other Requirements, introduced by Councilmember Fall. Ordinance, excuse me.
This needs a two-thirds vote to amend the Planning Commission's recommendation.
Okay.
We will not have that next Monday.
So we probably need to move to suspend.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Clerk of Council has just pointed out that we do need to amend this as recommended by the Planning Commission. Okay.
My move to recommend, to amend, to recommend.
So we need to amend, suspend, and approve. Is that true?
You don't need to amend.
Just, they're recommending.
Their recommendation. It's just, we did amend it, so now we need a two-thirds vote.
And it has to be two-thirds.
Got it. Okay, so you're moving to suspend. A second?
Yep.
Thank you.
Because we've been told we need to do this.
Okay.
Because next week we will not have enough of a quorum.
We don't have it. Right. Okay, so we have a motion and second for suspending the rules. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The rules have been suspended, Councilmember Fall.
I move that we adopt.
Second.
Thank you. We've talked about this for more than two committee meetings, I think. The, one of the other things is that it will bring in line with other ordinances that we have adopted in the past year concerning how you go through and do such things as give licenses for right-of-way, or these sort of things where it's a combination of legislative and administrative overview.
Okay. So we have a motion and second for approving 6219. Do we have any other comments or questions? Okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The motion carries and the ordinance has been approved. Ordinance 6319 is an ordinance closing a portion of West State Street between Court and Congress on Saturday, July 13th, 2019, from 8:00 AM to 9:00 PM, and closing a portion of Court Street between Washington and Carpenter and State, and State Street between Congress and College on Saturday, July 20th, from 6:00 AM to midnight for Ohio Brew Week, and is introduced by Councilmember Kotzis. Ordinance 6419 is an ordinance suspending the enforcement of Athens City Code, Section 13.04.10, Unnecessary Noise in the Uptown Area on Saturday, July 13th and Saturday, July 20th, 2019, for Ohio Brew Week. And this is introduced by Councilmember Kotzis. Ordinance 6519 is an ordinance suspending the enforcement of Athens City Code, Chapter 11.04, Vending, Peddling, and Soliciting to Allow Vending in a Designated Area on Saturday, July 13th, 2019, and Saturday, July 20th, 2019, During Ohio Brew Week Event, introduced by Councilmember Kotzis. And ordinance 6619 is an ordinance closing a portion of Court Street between State and Carpenter on Carpenter on Saturday, August 10th, from 6:00 a.m. to 1:00 a.m. on Sunday, August 11th, 2019. I'm sorry, it's on Saturday, August 10th, from 6:00 a.m. to 1:00 a.m. And then on Sunday. For Boogie on the Bricks, a family music and arts festival, yes. And Council... Or Mayor Patterson, did you have a comment? Yes.
No.
You're needing to amend and suspend.
Yes, please, yes.
I love to have cues from everybody. Help us keep me in line. Thank you.
Yeah, President Isley, at this time, I would like to amend 06619.
Okay. And do we have a second?
Second.
And the reason for the amendment is, we need to expand the street closure instead of being from Carpenter... I'm sorry, from State to Carpenter. Everywhere in legislation where it says State, we need to change that to between Washington and Carpenter. So, it'll be a two-block closure with Washington intersection remaining open.
Okay. So, we have a motion and second for amending this by expanding it to one additional street. And do we have any comments or questions? Mayor Patterson?
Just to make note that Washington will remain open to traffic flow through there. Again, it would just... The closure would begin on the north side of Washington on Court Street and extend on up to Carpenter.
Okay. Okay. So, we have an amendment offered, a motion and second for that. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Okay, this has been suspended, or, excuse me, amended. Now it's suspended.
President Isley, I would like to suspend ordinance 06619 at this time.
Second.
Okay. So, we have a motion and second for suspending, and the reason being, we need to get this passed in time for the...
We need to allow the promoter enough time to think about this. We don't want to come back in August and give him... Give them two weeks to get this together.
Okay. So, we now have a motion and second for suspending the rules. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Okay, the rules have been suspended. And you want to make the motion to approve now?
Okay, I'm sorry, did I...
So, we suspended, and now we'll approve.
I'm sorry.
No, it's okay.
I got... I started working on the next one, so...
Let's get this one done first.
Okay, I apologize. I just got ahead of myself.
I'll make a motion and second.
Yeah. President Isley, I would like to make the motion to adopt 06619 at this time.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion and second for approval. Any other comments or questions? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The motion carries and the ordinance is approved. Ordinance 6719 is an ordinance suspending the enforcement of Athens City Code Section 13.04.10, Unnecessary Noise in the Uptown Area, on Saturday, August 10th, and until 1:00 a.m. on Sunday, August 11th, 2019, for Boogie on the Bricks, a family music and arts festival, introduced by Councilmember Kotzis. Now, we'll move on to...
This one, this one's fine.
Yeah, okay.
Okay.
And then we'll amend the next one then also.
Correct.
Okay. Ordinance 6818 is an ordinance suspending the enforcement of Athens City Code, Chapter 11.04, Vending, Peddling, and Soliciting, to allow vending on a designated... In a designated area on Saturday, August 10th, until 1:00 a.m. on Sunday, August 11th, 2019, during Boogie on the Bricks, a family music and arts festival.
President Isley, I would like to amend 06819 at this moment.
Second.
And once again, we are expanding that closure. Instead of being from State to Carpenter, this will be between Washington and Carpenter on the... On the given dates and times.
Okay. So, we have a motion and second for amending this with a new address for it, or the new streets. Any other comments or questions? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ordinance has been amended and read for the first time.
President Isley, at this time, I would like to suspend the rules for 06819.
Second.
And that is because time is of the essence.
Okay. So, we have a motion and second for suspending the rules. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The rules have been suspended.
Thank you. President Isley, I would like to adopt 06819.
Second.
Okay. We have a motion and second for adopting this ordinance. Any other comments or questions? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ordinance has been approved.
It's Boogie.
All right. We now have ordinances for a first reading, and as we explained tonight earlier at the beginning of the meeting, because of the limited number of council members available next Monday night, we're going to need to suspend on these first reading ordinances so that they are passed in time. Ordinance 6919 is an ordinance amending ordinance 6018, creating downtown redevelopment districts, known as DRDs, in the city of Athens, and this is introduced by all council members. And yes, Councilmember Fall, if you would speak to this.
I move that we suspend for 6919.
Second.
Thank you.
Okay.
What Chris said earlier.
We have a motion and second for suspending the rules on this, and all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Rules have been suspended.
Thank you. I oppose that we adopt 6919.
Second.
Thank you. As it is, it's another housekeeping sort of thing. After review, it was suggested that we drop the parcel from the mapping of this area for our downtown redevelopment district, and so, we have done that, and now we are putting through the amendment for that ordinance.
Okay. So, we now have a motion for approving ordinance 6919. Are there any other comments and questions? Mayor Patterson?
Just a comment, that the parcel that we're... We are removing, or that council is about to remove, is 203 Washington Street is the address to that particular building, and that we're... That's being removed due to the fact that... That West Washington was used as a way to connect to that property, and so, we're just cleaning that up to remove that parcel. It doesn't change the acreage of the downtown redevelopment district by much. I believe that parcel is... It's small. Its acreage is .11 acres, and a DRD needs to be no greater than 10 acres, so it's actually tightening things up in a good way to remove that.
Okay. Yes, Councilmember Butler?
Thank you. I just briefly want to express my support for this ordinance and the DRDs in general. The mayor has kept us abreast along the way and informed of this new form of development. I think it's an exciting opportunity for some growth. Thank you.
Okay. Any other comments or questions? All right, we have a motion and second for approving this ordinance, 6919. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The motion carries and the ordinance is approved. Ordinance 7019 is an ordinance amending the 2019 appropriation ordinance, and introduced by Councilmember Reisner.
Thank you, Madam President. I'd like to move that we suspend the rules for 7019.
Second.
Well, for the reasons that you stated before.
We have to be able to pass this before the end of the cycle here, before we go on recess. All right. We have a motion and second for suspending the rules. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The rules have been suspended, Councilmember Reisner.
Thank you, Madam President. I move that we adopt 7019.
Second.
7019 is an appropriation ordinance. It is essentially doing the following. It's going to amend the appropriate... 2019 appropriation ordinance 14018 by appropriating from the unappropriated balance a sum of $3,000 to Water Fund 740, Transaction Code 500, to add safety lights, utility cap, bed liner, rest proofing to the new water meter truck, and increase in the total appropriations by said amount, and then further decreasing sewer fund plan 750.637, Transaction Code 500, by $47,000, and increasing sewer fund maintenance 750.635, Transaction Code 500, by same amount for the College Street sanitary sewer improvements, and decreasing and increase in the total appropriations by said amount.
Okay.
So, that's what we're voting on.
So, we have a motion and second for approval of ordinance 7019. Any other questions or comments? Yes, Councilmember Butler?
Thank you. Again, I just want to offer my support. We have an aging infrastructure, and the city administration has communicated well with us about these needs, and I think that it's a pressing concern. Thank you.
We see it every day.
Okay. All right. Thanks. We have a motion and second now for approving this ordinance. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The motion carries and the ordinance is approved. Ordinance 7119 is an ordinance authorizing disposal of an Athens Transit Bus, no longer needed for a municipal purpose, and is introduced by Councilmember Butler.
Thank you, President Isley. I'm not aware of whether or not we need to act today on suspending or...
I think we do need to move these along and close these out before we go on recess.
Thank you. At this moment, President Isley, having heard we acknowledged earlier in the meeting, I would like to make a motion to suspend ordinance... The rules for ordinance 7119.
Second.
Thank you.
Okay, we have a motion and second for suspending the rules on 7119. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The rules have been suspended, Councilmember Butler.
Thank you, President Isley. I would like to follow through then with a motion to adopt ordinance 7119.
Second.
Thank you. We do have a request here from the administration. We're dealing again with aging Transit Bus, no longer... Transmission is no longer working, the air conditioning as well is not working, throttle body is needed to be replaced. This particular vehicle is a 2011 Ford Goshen Coach with over 213,000 miles.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, we have a second... Motion and second for approving 7119 of disposing of the bus. Any other comments or questions? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The motion carries and the ordinance is approved. Ordinance 7219 is an ordinance authorizing the purchase of a tractor and boom mower for the Department of Engineering and Public Works, introduced by Councilmember Butler.
Thank you, President Isley. Am I just presenting, or is there a need?
There's a need.
There's a need, okay, thank you. We've heard from the mayor, thank you. I would like to make a motion to suspend the rules, please, for ordinance 7219.
Second.
The reason being, our other mower broke, and we've held out as long as we can, right? Thank you.
Our 2003 mower, it has left us, and can be used for trade-in, but we... This is critical. We need this because we're in the middle of tall grass season.
Height of mowing season, yeah. Okay, we have a motion and second for suspending the rules. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The rules have been suspended, Councilmember Butler.
Thank you, President Isley. I would like to proceed with a motion to adopt ordinance 7219.
Second.
Thank you. We heard from the mayor. It has been a rainy spring and early summer. That thus means there is a need to address some of these concerns. The mayor also acknowledged, we heard about a trade-in credit, which is worth, if my understanding here is correct, $32,000. The request to spend is up to $96,000 from Street Fund 220 TC 500. Thank you.
Okay, we have a motion. We have a motion and second for approving ordinance 7219.
Any other comments or questions? Okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The motion carries and the ordinance is approved.
Thank you.
We now have a motion to remove ordinance 5019 from the table, and as noted, though, we do not need to amend this, but we do need to remove it from the table so that we can pass it.
Right, so moved.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and second for removing this from the table. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Okay, it's been removed from the table.
I would like to make a motion that we adopt 5019.
Second.
Before we do so, I'd like to read this for the... For the minutes, in the section talking about $18,000 to Athens City Enhancement Fund 250, Transaction Code 300, the following, it's broken down as follows. $6,000 is for the Athens Fourth of July fireworks, $6,000 for Community Food Initiative, $3,000 to Athens America Bloom, $2,000 for the Army Park improvements, and $1,000 for neighborhood improvement micro grants totaling $18,000.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for providing that.
I thank the mayor for...
So, we have a motion and second for approving ordinance 5019. Any other comments or questions? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries and the ordinance is approved. We have several other items of business. We have the May financial reports from the auditor's office. Someone to make a motion for approving these.
So moved.
Second. Okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Okay, those been... Those reports have been approved. We also now have credit card transactions. That's part of state law that the council needs to review and approve these. They have been reviewed, so if I could have a motion for accepting these May credit card transactions?
Second.
Okay, we have motion and second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. And under other announcements, then, we will also have, yes, Mayor Patterson.
If I may, President Isley, I'd like to announce a couple individuals who are here with us tonight. The Mayor's Partnership for Progress has two new interns that are working for the Mayor's Partnership for Progress, and they're here tonight. David Giddens is here, and David, if you want to just take a second to introduce yourself to council members and describe your background?
Well, as I said, I'm David Giddens. I'm a third year here at OU, studying poly-sci pre-law for minor anthropology. I'm from Columbus, Ohio, and I'm also one of the new interns for the Mayor's Partnership for Progress group.
Great.
Welcome.
Welcome.
Thank you.
And our second new intern, Connor Kocansky, who's here as well. Connor, if you want to just take a second to introduce yourself, council?
Hi, everybody. I'm Connor Kocansky. I'm a senior here from Youngstown, Ohio, also studying political science pre-law, and I'm excited to be part of this council.
All right, welcome. Good to see you.
Thank you, council. There was an opportunity that came up through Ohio University with some funding, and it was a real quick turnaround, and I'd like to, you know, give a thank you to Mary Nally as well as Lisa Cohen through the College of Arts and Sciences who put this together. And so, we're really excited to have these two young men working for us this summer. They'll be working for us for 10 weeks, and when I say us, working for the 15 counties that makes up the Ohio Mayor's Partnership for Progress.
that makes up the Ohio Mayor's Partnership for Progress. We're hoping it's going to be a fruitful and experiential summer for these two young individuals. You're welcome.
Well, we'll look forward to hearing about your summer later on then. Okay, and we'll be having, next Monday night, we will be having committee meetings, and we'll also be having this special session. And we do also now have, are there any other announcements that council members need to make? We now have an opportunity for citizens to speak on legislative items and city services that were not covered on the agenda, and I think we have several speakers here to join us tonight to give us some information.
Do I need to sign here?
You can after you're finished. That's fine. Go ahead.
Hello. My name is Andrea Rainey, and I'm representing Rural Action Zero Waste Program tonight. I live at 122 West Columbus Street in Nelsonville. I'm here tonight to share with you information on the success and importance of the curbside compost pilot that has been running in Athens since August of 2018. Rural Action has worked on this project for the past three years at the request of the city because of the administration's excitement in exploring this cutting-edge idea. We researched best practices on curbside compost services from across the country, designed the program, and have administered it in partnership with Athens Hocking Recycling Center. The program has been met overwhelmingly with a high level of satisfaction from participants and has created very direct environmental impact through waste aversion from the landfill. Last week, we took a survey of pilot participants and achieved a 34% response rate. 79% of respondents gave the program a seven out of seven, the highest satisfaction rating available, and 15% of respondents rated the program a six. In just 10 and a half months, the program has diverted over 40 tons of organic material from the landfill, where it would have emitted much higher levels of methane and other greenhouse gases. According to the U.S. Public Interest Research Group, the number of communities offering municipal composting programs has grown by 65% in the past five years. Communities like Athens are seeing the social, environmental, and economic benefits of offering these programs to their residents, and based on the preliminary waste aversion numbers, this is clearly one of the most effective strategies the city has seen at helping to accomplish the Athens Sustainability Action Plan goal of composting 50% of organic waste by 2020. Because of the recent unexpected changes in the waste hauling contract process, we were not anticipating asking for an extension of the compost pilot. In light of the very positive response to the program, and also considering the urgency of action for a future with a livable climate, we ask that the city find ways for this service to continue. We agree that the program should become a standardized municipal service that is not subsidized financially by the city. The results of our informal survey show that most respondents are willing to pay for curbside composting, and we would encourage the city to undertake a more comprehensive survey process to gain specific data from a wider demographic on preferences and possible fee structures. We look forward to being in conversation with you before next week's committee meeting about how to stabilize the city's trash and recycling fund while at the same time providing innovative services that promote zero waste. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Andrea.
I do also have paper copies of a report from the survey that I mentioned and responses if you want to find me after the meeting.
Great. And we will, as Andrea noted, that this will be a committee agenda item next week, so she's just, but giving us, we're giving them opportunity to make comment tonight. And Bruce, did you want to make some comments too?
Thank you for that.
Logan, thank you, Andrea, for giving some background on the composting action, or the composting program and how it's done in the community and the diversion that's created. I think from, I want to speak from an operational standpoint. You know, our, my board of directors took on that operation back in 2015, and through these conversations with Rural Action and the city to get compost going, we've essentially subsidized the program in many ways financially to keep it going with the idea that eventually it would be provided to the city at a much larger scale, and I think I would like to point out that it really has to be at a certain scale to work. Much like the recycling is at a large scale, everyone pays a recycling support fee to keep that going, whether they recycle or not. I think that's important. It has to be at a scale like that. It doesn't necessarily be exactly like the recycling program, but I think we have to get to a certain point to make it viable financially for a service provider to provide the service. I mean, there has to be a minimum number of households that participate, but I think looking at the research, you know, looking at the best practices across the country, it really does work best when it's a full citywide service. Everyone can participate, and at those higher levels, creating that larger scale, it brings the cost per unit down very substantially. You know, our HRC's bid in the most recent bid cycle was $132,000, and that was for 1,000 residences per the city, the bid specs, and that's an 11, that averages out to about $11 per household per month, but if it was full citywide, we could get it down to at or below $5 per month per household. So that's just something to consider going forward, that those different scales have a big effect on the cost of it. Thank you.
Great, thank you. And is there anybody else from the audience that wants to take this moment to talk to us about anything that wasn't on the agenda tonight? That being said, I entertain a motion to adjourn. Do we have a second for adjournment?
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, opposed, nay. And we will adjourn at 7:56 p.m. and see you next Monday night on June 24. Thank you.
Thank you.